This conference will now be recorded.
Okay. Call this meeting to order, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning to all. Next regularly, regular meeting for the Board of Supervisors will take place on April the first of two thousand twenty-two at nine o'clock at the Community Center, three five hundred, Edge Water Drive, Sebring, Florida, three three eight seven two. Please silence and turn off your cell phone. Okay, we're going to start with consent agenda, we'll just run through them one by one. And then that question is, do we vote on each individually or do we vote just as a total package? Oh, question is, where's David?
That's a good question. I had not heard from him. And I expected him to be here.
Right.
We'll give him a call. I sent him an email.
I would say if there isn't any changes on any of, we could do it all once, but I can't imagine that.
All right, we'll, we'll vote on.
Yeah. I would. Yeah, that's why. Yep.
Okay, we'll go one by one then. Minutes of the Board of Supervisors from March the fourth.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any board comments on that? Any public comments on that? I guess we vote.
Supervisor Phillips?
Yes.
Supervisor Herrick?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Hurley?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes. The Treasurers' Report for October of two thousand twenty-one.
Move to approve.
Second.
Do I have any board comments?
Yes.
Ready?
On page twelve of the Treasurers' Report for October, the IT support was six thousand over budget. These are the items that I talked to you about, Mike, or Chris?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm going to review all those items with Amanda on Monday, but I think those are really just fund transfers, those overages that you see when we are reclassing things into the new numbering system, so I don't think you'll, none of those items are actually over budget, it's just really where they were assigned. But I have about six items you asked me about yesterday, and I'll get a line-by-line explanation for you and where they were going, we just haven't done any transfers, you know, under budget transfers yet.
Just for the records, can I have, Mr. Herrick, can you tell us what lines you are concerned about?
On page twelve, it was the IT support for a charge of eight thousand dollars versus a budget of two thousand.
Okay.
Consultation fees of six thousand versus twenty-five hundred.
Okay.
Office expenses of seventy-seven hundred versus two thousand.
Okay.
News and subscriptions of four thousand versus four hundred and fifty-eight.
Okay.
On page fourteen, IT support again, three thousand versus three seventy-five.
Okay.
Page eight, sixteen.
Sixteen.
Insurance line for two thousand dollars versus two hundred and fifty, I'm assuming that's paid at the beginning of the year or something, I'm not sure.
Okay.
And then on page eighteen, contract labor, fifty-three hundred versus twenty-nine hundred, I'm assuming that's meter readers, but. And then on page nineteen, drainage maintenance for sixty-two thousand versus a budget of twenty-three thousand, I think that was an emergency repair.
Yes, it was, that was, because that's when Dan was here and I, that's when I did that, October.
All right, so Chris, the way we're going to work this, the way we're going to work this, if anybody has any questions or concerns, you're going to log them, get with Amanda, and then she will report back via email.
Yeah, we can do it, but we'll send you an email as soon as, we should be able to go over all of it Monday and have answers to all those questions.
Send the email to all the board members, so everybody's aware of it. Was there anything else on the October report? Anybody who wants to ask? Any public comments on that? Okay.
I guess I would move the table until next week, next week.
Second.
Uh, so we have to vote, any, any public or board comments on table lead? Any public comments? So the vote will then be to table the October Treasurers' Report until the next meeting when we have answers.
Supervisor Phillips?
Yes.
Supervisor Herrick?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Hurley?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes. Okay, Treasurers', Treasurers' Report for November of two thousand twenty-one, that one, I believe, we have already approved that one, we did that back on February fourteenth, so unless there's any questions on that, that's already been approved. So we'll go to Treasurers' Report on December two thousand twenty-one. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Any comments from the board on that report? Any public comments? We have a vote, please.
Supervisor Phillips?
Yes.
Supervisor Herrick?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Hurley?
Yes.
And Supervisor Brooks?
Yes. Treasurers' Report of January two thousand twenty-two. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any board comments on that one? I have a couple of concerns. Again, on, on the water and the sewer readings that we're doing, are we getting accurate readings now? Because if you're looking on page three at the numbers, and especially on page four, where you look at the water revenue number, I mean, we go one hundred and sixteen thousand, one hundred and twelve thousand, then twenty-one thousand, and then eighty-seven thousand, so I'm assuming the twenty-one thousand was in, was, something was wrong, but it doesn't seem that we made it up, so we seen, it doesn't seem right.
Well, where that, and I'll have to double check it, where that discrepancy is coming in, is you had approximately a hundred and ten thousand dollars in refunds issued.
Yeah, that's, I know I asked you about it, and that's what you told me.
And that was from overestimating and estimating those reads, and people came back and said, I haven't been here in six months.
Okay, so these are the net numbers then, so to speak, they're not the gross numbers. So this was due to refunds that we gave back in December.
Right. Well, there, it was over a three or four month period that, when they were catching up with all those reads, when they started doing the accurate reads.
Okay.
And, and that's why.
Are we all caught up now with that situation?
Yeah, and we're, and we're still reading every meter, every three months, we get all of them read, and we're, we have advertising for some new positions to, you know, where we're reading them every month, and we have about fifty customers that have specifically asked us to read them every month.
Okay, on page eleven, again, contractual labor, which Mr. Herrick mentioned in the other report, there's a charge there with no budget at all, what, what exactly, I think we need to know what contractual labor is and what we, what we're spending the money on.
Well, we have, we have two part-timers, one meter reading, and the second one, office administrative help that we use through.
This is under finance?
Right.
This one? So it's, it's part-timers that were never budgeted?
That was help that they brought in, Amanda needed, right in October, November, December, and we've continued to use that person.
Okay.
We aren't going to be over budget on the labor, because there are several positions we haven't been funding, and even Chrissy's position, we just started this last month.
These are people that we hired to read the meters, and we just never had a budget?
And office help, too.
Yeah, there's, there's two, one's, one's meter reading, one's office.
Okay, then on page twenty-three, what exactly is sludge disposal?
Joey, all yours.
We spent thirty thousand dollars so far on sludge disposal, what is that?
Make it smell as good as you can.
All right, that is where, once the end of the treatment process has been done, it goes into a trailer, and it's literally the solids that we've accumulated out of the plant, and they get shipped off to fruit fields, so.
Yeah.
Um, that is, that is the waste that is left over, and we did have an issue with our screw press, it was a very small part, but it took us about eight weeks to get the part because of everything going on with shipping, and we ended up having to have Pew ship the sludge to Avon Park.
Because you know, we're already four thousand dollars over the year budget, and this is only January.
Yes, sir, but that is a process that just can't stop, because the plant can't stop.
So it's just a bad plant?
No, it was a bad part that, I mean, it was literally, it was probably less than a hundred dollar part, they just took it down and out, and it took a long time, eight weeks to get here, so, and it, and then at that point, the plant will start backing up, and that's when samples and everything get out of whack for DP and it's just a process of damage.
Should be more realistic going forward.
Yes, sir, yeah, and we are working on, we've already ordered another one of those parts as well, just to stock it, it's miniscule, so.
Okay. Will you be back in budget by end of the year?
I, I don't see how, but we, we're not going to have this issue, we shouldn't have this issue again.
That's, I don't think, he's already four thousand over for the entire year.
Yeah.
Right, but if he's going to be under, I mean, he's only got two thousand budgeted, well, this particular month.
No, but what I'm saying, the total year's budget is twenty-five thousand, we've already spent twenty-nine thousand.
Oh, I got you, got you, got you.
Yeah, so he can't, he's not going, he may be able to level it off.
Yeah.
So that number, should month-to-month going forward be more realistic to last year?
Yes, sir, the average from the past, that was just a bad month, obviously.
Okay. Any other board comments on January? Any public comments on January? Vote.
Supervisor Phillips?
Yes.
Supervisor Herrick?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Hurley?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes. Okay, we're over to golf, golf report, October of two thousand twenty-one, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any board comments on that report? Any public comments on that report? We have a vote, please.
Supervisor Phillips?
Yes.
Supervisor Herrick?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Hurley?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes. Golf report, November two thousand twenty-one, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Any board comments on November? Any public comments on November? We have a vote, please?
Supervisor Phillips?
Yes.
Supervisor Herrick?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Hurley?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes. Golf financials for December of two thousand twenty-one, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any board comments? Any public comments?
Supervisor Phillips?
Yes.
Supervisor Herrick?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Hurley?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes. Okay, that now gets us current, January of two thousand.
Point of order.
Huh? I'm sorry?
I believe, Deborah, you should be alternating the meth, the order in which you ask for the votes.
Oh, okay.
It just.
Yeah, that's, I should have brought that up, that's a very good point, what, what you should do is like, if you start with Ms. Phillips, the next time you start with Mr. Herrick, you just keep going.
Oh, okay.
And I'm always last, or the president's always last.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Good point.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're at January of two thousand twenty-two. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any board comments? I have some, I know, I just hope we keep some. Huh?
Go ahead.
Well, it's all community. A couple of things, on the report itself, I'm making some changes, or I'm going to recommend that we make some changes. I'm going to, the balance sheet, that is always present for the, uh, the report, which nobody really knows what it is, I'm going to eliminate that from the report going forward unless anybody has an objection. It's that balance sheet? It's not statistics. Yeah, it's page, it's there, page seven and page eight.
Yes.
Unless anybody has objections, we, we really don't refer to it, we don't need to see it, so I'd like to eliminate that from the report. There were two check, check balances, I guess is the right way to say it, that we get, we get a general ledger, and then we get a check register. The check register, if I remember correctly, is the actual checks that we cut during that period of time. The ledger is the actual charges to each of the accounts that occurred during that month. So the check register will not necessarily match up, because that's just checks that we cut, not necessarily expenses that we incurred that month. So to me, to have that report doesn't make any sense, to have the other report, because those are charges that went to accounts that month, makes sense. So I would like to eliminate the check register unless anybody has an objection.
Just one comment on the balance sheet, if you do it quarterly, it's there for public record, and it is very important to do audits and stuff like that, obviously, when we do a balance sheet, you know, we're only doing operating income balance sheet, the real balance sheet comes from the district, but most of my clubs at least do it quarterly, you can do it semi-annually, I wouldn't recommend eliminating it in case there is people that are accounting, accountants or something that want to look at it.
I didn't need to eliminate it.
Yeah.
The report itself, I meant eliminating it, you know, what we do.
Oh, in your bank?
Pardon me?
In your bank, we'll still report it.
They would still do, you can still do the report, that's fine.
Okay. I misunderstood, sorry.
No, I probably didn't explain it correctly, my, my apologies. So are we okay with eliminating the check register? I, I, anybody object to that?
I don't know.
Okay, there's one other change that we're going to make, if you look at page three, and you go down to the bottom where it says other, the intent was to, that, the intent for other was to be the capital charges that they incurred, and if you look at the numbers, it's not working out correctly right now, because for example, if you look at October, it says thirty-one thousand four hundred and ninety-one, and then it, then it's written off thirty-one thousand four hundred and ninety-one, so there's no real charge for the actual capital.
Yep.
So I worked with Amanda and Mike a couple days ago, I think, and we've decided that we are going to list the capital, but we're going to change it, we're going to have a total performance for golf and restaurant without capital, then we're going to add the capital at the bottom and put a total performance for the company.
Got it.
And, because that's really what we were looking to do, we just haven't been able to get there yet.
Yep.
So unless anybody objects, we're going to continue and make those changes, Amanda was working on it with their people, so hopefully in February, we will see a more accurate report for what we were looking for. Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. It's not that easy, Mike, couple of questions that I have now on your performance. I am still very much concerned over my favorite line, which is payroll, well, labor, I guess, in the restaurant, it's getting a little high again, it's, it's pretty, it's been running pretty good, it's fifty-nine percent for the year, which is better than last year, which was seventy-four percent, but this, the month of January, you went back up to sixty-seven percent, so there was a big spike.
Yeah, um, on that note, for January, that was when we had, that was when we had the big spike in COVID, and we had a lot of employees out, so the, the percentage went up for two reasons, number one, because our revenue went down, we lost about thirty thousand dollars in revenue, but we also, people on the payroll that we had available to use were starting to hit overtime, which, which boosted that number up. Uh, as far as overall performance for the year, yes, it's getting better, um, but the same trend with our labor issues, we're still not running as efficient as we definitely would like to, um, the target's still to be forty percent or better on direct labor, and then fifty percent on this page here, but we're, as the labor force kind of gets a little better, we'll be able to run a little more efficient.
If I, if I look at your performance so far, and unfortunately, I do frequent the restaurant quite a bit, uh, I, I see you have two challenges, one, you're understaffed in the kitchen, and that's a serious problem, and it's causing, in my opinion, a loss of business. And secondly, I still don't think that we use our people or our staff as best as we can, I can't put my finger on it, but it just seems to me that I see a lot of people there, but I still see that we're having problems. And I don't, whether it's training, or whether it's, I'm not sure what exactly it is, but we're not, we're not using the people the way we should, that's my, those are concerns that I have.
Sure. Um, maybe we could sit down for five minutes, and you can let me know your thoughts, and I'll definitely look into them, um, but yes, our, we, we have serious labor concerns, mostly back of the house, line cooks, it's, it's definitely a real struggle, you know, we've been running ads for months now, I've had, we had one applicant the other day, came in, looked pretty good, said, we'll hire you, come start your paperwork tomorrow, never showed up, it's just the way it's working right now, it's tough, we've, we've, we've.
Are we not, are we offering a good salary?
We're offering higher salaries now than we were, I mean, it's, and it's the same for everywhere, I mean, all the other restaurants, like, like, we know, we know folks that operate other restaurants, you know, chicanes, watering hole, they're all in the same boat, everybody's in the same boat, they're all struggling just as much as we are.
Is our salary package comparable with theirs?
It, I would, I mean, I don't know exactly what they're offering, but it, yes, it's, it can't, it's, it's in the ballpark, and we have several different positions, so there's a couple of different salary marks to hit, but, um.
It's just a concern, I mean, if, if there's anything that the board can do to help you with your situation?
Absolutely.
You should let us know.
I, I will, I will one hundred percent do that, yes.
I mean, it's pretty tough, when I went in the kitchen the other night, and Ron, who is your restaurant manager, he's kind of.
We're super fortunate that, that Ron.
He's back there cooking.
We're super fortunate that Ron has a background in the back of the house, so unfortunately, yeah, so our, basically our number two guy in the restaurant's on vacation, so that's our next best option, and, and we're fortunate that we have a guy that can do that, to get us through the week, especially because we're super busy.
Mike, I, I understand completely, but again, we don't sit here, the five of us, and try to run your restaurant, I mean, this is totally your job, and I understand there's a lot of challenges, but I think the last thing you need is us, us five get involved in you running your golf and your restaurant, that's your job to do, it's our job to judge how you're doing it, so, you know, I, good luck. But I don't think you want me in there trying to tell you how to run a restaurant, that's not what we do here. Just get the job done.
I don't, I would agree, except for the fact that I think if we see things that we think need to be changed.
Yeah, that we think.
Then we, well, that's right, that's what we think, well, that's what he thinks, too, I mean, if we see things that we think we can help him with, then I think we ought to offer it.
This is supposed, in my opinion, this is supposed to be a joint effort, we're supposed to do what we can to see that this thing works, and if it means.
It's not working.
An individual board member giving their opinion to Mike, then I think that's fine. He can't tell him what to do, but he can certainly.
No, I, I agree that you can give an opinion, Ray, I, I agree with that, so, but apparently it hasn't worked.
Well.
I think that we all appreciate the problem, I truly do, but I think what we're looking for is, can we help you so we can see an improvement?
Exactly.
I know we're sitting, still sitting there for thirty-five minutes waiting on hammer.
Right, uh, for sure, I think.
And I, I guess I'm going to, I think there has been significant improvement in the evening help.
Right.
Are you where you need to be? No, but I think you're, you have been making some progress.
Right.
Now, from what I'm understanding, I think you're going backwards on Wednesday, and I know, and you're going to have to wrestle that to the ground, and your lunch, I continually hear problems about lunch, and I think that probably related to the help that you have at lunchtime, but then you have to somehow fix that. That's all.
Mike, um, I, I visit a lot of restaurants here in Sebring, and everyone has said the same thing that Mike just told us, staff is so hard to get, and we even know it even here in, in maintenance and, and the facilities, um, I, I agree with Mike Gilpin, I think Mike's got to run it, but if we have something to say, we say it, but we got to let Mike run it, hire the people that he wants, let the people that he wants, that aren't doing good, he lets them go. I had a function on Friday night, there were two hundred and forty, forty-eight people there, I didn't have one person complain about the service, not one. So that's two hundred and forty-something people that didn't complain, now, maybe there were complaints, but I didn't hear them, my wife didn't hear them, and I think you did a great job, I mean, um, I mean, no matter where you go, in the country, it's the same thing, it's, it's so hard to get the right staff, right? And we also, I remember, we're all older here, we were brought up different, you know, we have different views about work, the younger people aren't like that, I mean, they don't have a problem with calling in sick. I worked in a place, place for thirty-five years, I called in once, once in ten years, okay? I just think that Mike's doing the best job he can, and I'm not saying it because he's here, because I've talked to Mike about a couple things, I just think we got to give him a chance, uh, and he's got to, you know, he's got to make the change to make it better, and I think he's trying, so.
All right, I'll just say one more thing, you know, one more time, if you need something from us, you better come to us, I expect things to get better, I don't care about other restaurants, I don't care about other golf courses, I only care about Sun 'Em Lake, that's all I care about, and if it's not up to the standards that I think it should be, or that the board thinks it should be, that's not acceptable. Any other board comments?
No.
Any public comments?
Good morning, Bill Norquist.
Uh, maybe it, it might help if the ordering system was done by, it's a, it's a remote computer, basically, and the waitress punches in, I forget the acronym for that, and, you know, it seems where other people, other places are going for that, and it would help in getting the order in, and the waitress or waiter can get the drinks immediately, so I mean, it would save time.
The system that was installed doesn't allow for the iPads to be utilized.
I'm sorry, Greg, come here.
The system that they have in the restaurant does not support iPad usage.
Well, we discussed that a long time ago, five or six years ago, and the, the system was.
No, it was not.
But now it's maybe a different system, maybe you can comment on that, Mike.
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Herrick, your comment is correct. Our system does not, is not very compatible with the iPad system with, with the way our printers and everything set up. However, that has been two years. So I'll be, I'll be happy to contact the company and see if they've created anything new. I'd be happy to look into that.
I, I'm not ready to go there until you, if you think it's the right thing to do for your, you and your staff, then you should go check it out. If you don't, I don't want, that's it, done.
Absolutely. Well, I'll, I'll still take the time to look into it. And then if we feel it's the best thing to do for our operation, then we'll do it. I mean, we gotta see if, what the cost is and, you know, what it's actually gonna do for us. So it's, it's a whole process. It's not like we're gonna change it tomorrow.
Any other public comments? Your name, please.
Yes, Robert Edlow. Several weeks ago, my wife and I went up to eat. There were walk-ins and they were taking a list. And there were two hosts. One hostess didn't talk to the other hostess, lack of communication. Other people came in, got seated before. My wife spoke up and talked to the manager and told him that was unacceptable. It was lack of training. And the hostess says, well, I didn't know your, the other person was making a list. How could you not know that every two hosts are there? You know, so a lot of it is like lack of training. I was with Sears for over ten years. And you had to be, take extensive tests to do things correctly. And I think they should have a meeting at least once every couple of weeks and find out what's going on, who's lacked the training. And have them work a little better at the hostess stand. I know that waiters and waitresses get training, but it's inexcusable what happened. That people were walking out that evening. So they lost revenue.
Thank you.
You all do a great job here. I commend you and I understand your feelings and you're right on. He's the man who thinks he should run the restaurant properly. Every place is gonna have little incidents and so forth. And ours to find out if he needs our help, we'll step in and help him out and get it running correctly. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Any other public comments? Vote? This is on the golf financial report for January two thousand twenty two.
Supervisor Herrick?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Hurley?
Yes.
Supervisor Phillips?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes. Okay. Hopefully, we don't have to go through this. We'll do them one by one next time when they're supposedly ready. We're gonna continue, by the way, when they, when the reports are ready, they will be emailed to each of the board members with a detachment saying that we're gonna talk, talk about it in the next meeting and it'll be on the agenda. We'll just go forward that way. All right, now we're at public comments on anything not pertaining to what we're gonna discuss still on the agenda. Are there any public comments in general?
Bill Norquist, resident. You've gone through several things and you didn't have a, I was gonna wait for the end, but you don't have anything after eleven. So this pertains to the golf course. Was that permissible right now?
If, if, if. We wanna stick with the subject. If you're here to complain about the golf course, no offense, we all know the condition of the golf course and there's no sense in beating it over again.
I just have a suggestion, that's all.
Okay, give us your suggestion.
That's all I wanna do, is I wanna offer this suggestion. I talked with Jimmy back there before the meeting. And I feel as though that there's a problem out there, okay? It could be a monumental problem if it isn't resolved. And the members, I hate to say it, they're building their gallows out there. I mean, they really are upset, okay? So I think it would be best if Jimmy would provide a, a definite, in detail newsletter explaining exactly what he's doing and it's gonna be fixed. I wanna be optimistic about this, but I, people don't, don't know. They don't, they see things going wrong and they said, it's not gonna be fixed and I'm not gonna join and I'm not gonna bring the member guests, my partner here.
What is your suggestion?
I'm ashamed.
What is your suggestion?
My suggestion is to have Jimmy make sure that through a newsletter or another documentation, that everybody knows what's going on. What his new application, cultural changes and everything else. And then that way, he can just point to it. That's what we're gonna do. We're gonna try hard.
Thank you.
Okay?
Yes, I will comment on that. I would, I would agree with you, Mr. Norquist. I believe the communication on the issues pertaining to the greens has been poor at best. There should have been better communication from the company out to the membership explaining what exactly happened with the greens. That being said, it's kind of everybody, at this point, we have invited the agronomist or the agronomist from their company. Will be here on April first at our next board meeting. And he will, at that time, explain, hopefully, what happened, what they're doing about it and when it's gonna be fixed. So until then, I don't believe there'll be any communication other than, yeah, we all know what's going on. I, too, am a member. I, too, play golf and I, too, see everything on the golf course. So the board and, and most of the guys here are aware, I think, are aware of the situation in the golf course. So we're not just sitting here and doing nothing. But things take time.
We should go on April second. April first is.
Oh, this is not an April Fool's joke, I promise you. So we will address it. It'll be for a public, you guys will all be able to sit here, what the gentleman has to say, and we'll go from there. Any other public comments? Yes, sir.
Could this be a public comment in general about things?
In general, yeah.
Okay. It's Robert Edlow. I live on Pont Ste Leon and I talked to one of the security gentlemen who was a former police chief up in Michigan. And him and I were talking about a lot of people, some people park their vehicles on the grass all the time and get told not to, then maybe a small fine. Then they come back and repeat it and keep doing it, keep doing it.
Right.
I'm not saying, I mean, harsh that should be done, but any other recommendation is to keep the people from doing it? I mean, I feel sorry for the people who live in duplexes and have multiple people live there, but that's not our fault, you know? Cars don't believe, belong on great gas. It could be leaking transmission fluid or oil, whatever, you know?
At the same meeting on April the first, the board is gonna review with the proper people, the code enforcement of the district.
Okay.
What can be done, what can't be done. And at that point in time, we're gonna ask the gentleman responsible for it, what help he needs to get it done the way it's written up. So we will address that on the April first meeting.
As well as people putting up the improper traction.
We will go over what is allowed, what is not allowed, and the penalties and what we need to do to enforce them.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Look forward to coming up here.
April first is gonna be a big day. Any other public comments? All right. Next is message from Commissioner Scott Corrick, but he is not available today, so we will pass on that. Now into the action agenda, and this is how I understand we have to go about this. I was, I've been informed, we have to suspend the meeting to call for the public hearing to discuss the connection fee and implementation, implementation date. So I guess I suspend it. Meeting is suspended. I need a motion to call the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
One question before we start. Have you got a hold of Dave?
Yeah. Yeah, I bring that up. Dave was stuck in traffic coming out of Orlando this morning. He is online listening.
Yes, I'm here for the hearing.
And unfortunately, with my technology and a back order of a part, I'm still short of cable. We ordered that camera and cable to bring in here. As of yesterday, it still hadn't come in. So he cannot communicate with us, but he can hear us.
Okay.
And he could chat in.
Okay.
Okay. So we are here to discuss the connection fee and implementation, and that would be your category.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just in the background, since January, we've had presentations and discussions about raising the connection fees for the water and wastewater services that the district provides. We had a study that was done by the Florida Rural Water Association. And they've also been working on studies for Sebring and Avon Park. They do them statewide. They finished their report and provided two options to us for raising those connection fees. And the, it's basically a total replacement cost or useful life. We still have useful life in our plants. We're going with that level. But the proposal is to take the water connection fee from the current one thousand dollars to two thousand six hundred and thirty dollars. And the wastewater fee, which is seventeen hundred dollars, and raise that to four thousand and ninety dollars. Now, those, those incremental increases would come in over two years. We would take that increase, split it in half, and each year, put it, put in that increase. So if your wastewater is, your water is going up that level, basically sixteen hundred and thirty dollars, well, in thirty days, that fee would go up eight hundred and fifteen dollars and next year, another eight hundred and fifteen dollars. Just to be clear, a connection fee is basically they're paying for capacity in the plant. Say we spend ten million dollars for a ten million gallon plant. The house is two hundred and fifty gallons a day. What did it cost to build that plant? Okay, here's your pro rate, a share of that capacity or connection. In the utility world, it's not really a pure, what they would call impact fee. But in, in the money from that basically goes right into a capital account for replacements of things in those two plants. So, and we did, at the last meeting, too, looked at a comparison of those fees. And in our new level, our fees will be at the, at the higher end of the range. But I really anticipate you'll see Avon Park and Sebring will be raising their fees in the near future and also the City of Lake Placid. But we're still in that five thousand dollar range, which is kind of average for this area. And the fee is only paid by new construction or if somebody does a big remodel. And the remodel, I would say, would be something commercial or maybe they're taking a low use with some offices and one bathroom and they're gonna turn it into a high water use, a restaurant or a dialysis center, something like that. But it's going to be the new construction that pays this higher fee. And it's not any of the current residents. So there's no impact to current residents and current customers. And typically, this fee is passed right through to the home buyer from the builder. And I will, I will caution, too, in some cases, I've seen larger builders that'll come in in the next two or three weeks and they'll prepay twenty or thirty connection fees for homes they're gonna build and have that connection fee paid at that rate. And then when the customer comes in and buys the home, they'll say, oh, this is the right now. And they'll charge them that rate. So it's actually a way they could make some money. But that's typically what happens with that fee. It's just passed right on to the new homeowner. And if you look at a typical house, a new one, that's two hundred and twenty five, two hundred and fifty thousand or more, a five thousand dollar, an increase of about three thousand, we're doing. I don't think it's gonna be significant to deter the housing market. And also, those fees typically go up over time. So someone that's paying now, it's really adding value to your home. So that's the good parts.
That's good. At the last meeting, the board had, I don't remember if we voted or we had a consensus that we were okay with the going up fifty percent over two years. So now it's for the, the public to, if they have any comments on it? Any public comments on this issue at all? Then I believe we go back, any, any further board comments? Then I believe we're at the point where we vote to approve this.
Yeah, and the motion would be to increase the utility connection fees for water at twenty six hundred and thirty dollars and wastewater at four thousand and ninety dollars, based on the useful life calculation. And also adopt the meter sizing equivalent residential connection report shown by tables one and two, page three of that Florida Rural Water Association report. So all these recommendations are all based on the work that Rural Water did. And they have a nice note in their presentation that said they've never lost a legal challenge to their connection fee work.
Do I have? Do we make this vote during the public hearing or do we go back to the?
It'd be during the public hearing.
Okay, very good.
Do I have a motion?
Wait, so Chris, all the money that we, we take in for this will go to a special account to keep everything upgraded? You know, right?
It'll go into the designated capital.
Okay, that's, that's the only thing I care about, you know, because we gotta start doing that.
Yeah, so you can account for that, too. It's like how much have we got in rates? How much have we got on new connection fees?
Right, good, perfect, okay. Thank you.
I make that motion.
My second.
Let's vote.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Oh, public comment again?
No, public comment. None, vote.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Hurley?
Yes.
Supervisor Phillips?
Yes.
Supervisor Herrick?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes. Okay, I officially close the special hearing. And I officially reopen the board meeting. And we move on to, are there any add in items?
No, we have no add in items.
Any petitions and communications?
No.
Staff reports. I believe we start with golf. Or I assume we start with golf. Am I doing it right? Well, well, we are gonna start with golf.
Yeah, it's up to you, what you want.
You be the leader.
Yes, sir.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So sent you the report from what Jeff went through the other day. I did the ESTRIC test Wednesday. Those, I sent them out the same day. Hopefully, we'll get those back in a week. I, I know some of that report, it's a lot of stuff in there. But the main reason we're doing it is to show the organic matter that we're fighting in the greens and then also to show how much we're percolating. So right now, so I pulled the test. So a lot of stuff, like six inches, there's a lot of fines in. So they're not USGA spec greens with gravel on the bottom of them. So what's happening right now in the first six inches is that it's compacted. And the coring that, I, I got a twelve month program that I'm gonna give to everybody on the first. I have it already. But the coring that we're gonna try to do this year is three airifications. So trying to do a five eighths, two five eighths and a three eighths towards the end of the year. And that, that, I mean, you can set and speculate all we want, but the, the main problem right now on the greens is that they're not draining. All the saturation's at top and it's dry when you go down. We went down twelve inches when Jeff was here. The sand is good in the bottom of the green, but the sand up top just has, from the thatch and the work, I can't build that from, you know, just previous years of not coring enough, you know? Really need to do three cores. And I think once we get on that program, we'll be fine. The other thing is, is our root mass. Right now, you get, the water's at top, so the roots aren't gonna go down into the greens. So that being said, I mean, we're gonna try to, after the member guest, we said we're gonna do the quarter inch by six inch solid time. I'm not gonna pull a core out of them, but I'm just gonna open up those cavities and, and try to get them breathing better and try to get some gas exchange there.
Well, member guest is next week. So waiting one more week is not the end of the world.
Right.
At this point.
It's gonna be the twenty eighth, and I'm gonna do that on that Monday. So the other thing is, is we've started on some of the erosion control that we talked about. We did it on number ten and we did sixteen as well. The cart path got poured yesterday behind sixteen on Turtle as well. So I'd like to continue with that through the years and all this erosion that we're having and stop it, especially with the way the ponds are right now. We're still gonna continue spraying fairways up until we get them going. May twenty third, when we do our core airification, we're planning on doing wall to wall over on Turtle. Fairways again, verticut and get the tees and collars punched. Those are reports that Jeff sent. I, I know a lot of you guys have seen how high our collars are on our greens. That's something that we need to consider, whether we either do the phrase mown or whether we cut them down. The water has to sheet flow. Everywhere that you have a bad spot right now is basically where the water collects and holds to. So if we can sheet flow, get the collars cut out and get the water to come off the greens.
Jimmy. Jimmy.
The water flow has been that way on these greens for quite some time. Now, why is it that this year is the issue? And it hasn't been in previous years. Now, why is it that this year is the issue, and it hasn't been in previous years, besides the freeze? And even then, I have to question, we've got other municipality, other courses that are, have very nice greens, and went through the same freeze.
Well, I tell you this, you can go south where I live, eight miles, and they do not have all the plant damage that we have here in Sun and Lake.
Okay, that's eight miles. The courses I'm talking about are eight miles away. But I just don't understand why the water shedding is different this year than it has been in previous years. I'll leave it at that.
Well, Mr. Herrick, right now, the whole thing is, is that they're not breathing, all right? They're compacted. And I'll, when we do our report, I'm going to show you the pictures of it. When you get your estrogen test, you're going to see that there's no air movement, which you got to have to grow the grass. So you don't, you have, your root mass right now is maybe a quarter inch. And we got, when we get done with it, you'll have a longer root mass, and nobody will help.
Wait a minute. At least for this year, I don't need to hear all this, because I don't understand any of it. I'm not, hear me out. I'm not an agronomist. I don't need you to come up here and tell me it's a quarter of an inch here, I need soil here, I need this, I need that. I want it fixed. And your responsibility is to fix it and maintain it. I don't want any excuses. I don't care about it. The fact is, we, somebody screwed up.
Nobody.
Somebody, no, no, somebody screwed up. Don't tell me it's the weather, because it's not the weather. You can tell me it had an effect on it, but we lost a lot of greens in a very short period of time. And I just want your guy to come here and tell me why it happened, why it's not going to happen again, and when it's going to be fixed.
That's fine. I mean, the biggest thing is going to do the three aerifications, I promise you that.
Whatever you need to do to do it, do it. You don't have to tell me you need three irrigations, five irrigations. I don't really care. As long as you fix it, I don't care. My only question to you would be, because we're the board of supervisors, is if you read the report, it was mentioned of equipment. Do we have the right equipment to fix it? That's my question.
We do.
Okay, we're good.
We do. The thing he was talking about with the equipment was that the mechanical areas and the cleanup, the cleanup areas are where you get your wear and care. We only do our cleanups three times a week. We don't even do them every day.
If you've got the right equipment, and you know what the problem is, then just fix it.
It will be.
Just one quick, what impact is this going to have on the budget?
It won't. I mean, the aerifications, we already budgeted. The only thing would be if we wanted to do a drill and fill, and really go in there and change the soil profile.
No, you can see, you're getting it all wrong. It's not whether we want to do it. You've got to do what's right for the cost. If you don't have the money to do it, that that's what we're here for.
Yes, sir.
To talk about it. Otherwise, you just do it.
The drill and fill would be the way to go. I'm telling you right now. I mean, we had greens that were 30 years old. So the goal, when we go to.
You have greens here that aren't even 10 years old on Deer Run. You know that, don't you? We replaced Deer Run about 10 years ago.
And how's number 15 right now?
It's perfect.
Exactly.
But that's, but we had to replace that because we lost it. But I'm just saying, I don't really care. I just want it fixed. That's all. Anything else, Jimmy?
Yeah, I got, because, and so, Jimmy, what you're saying is, what you want to do, there's going to be no more cost to what we want to do to fix them.
Correct.
Okay, that's all I want to know.
But can we maybe budget for the drill for next year?
Yes, absolutely.
Because I think we need to aerify four times a year.
Well, they need to be deep timed. That's the biggest thing. So six inches down is where you start getting your drain.
Yeah, I know.
But we'll definitely, we'll look at it.
But.
I'm going to get a price on it.
We can always cut a budget. Bring what you need to the board at budget.
That's fine. And like I said, I'm going to give you an asterisk when we do our budget this year. If you guys want to overseed greens, overseed fairways again.
What do you want to do? Don't keep asking us, it's your cause. You're responsible for your cause.
I don't want this place looking like it is today. If it takes overseeing to do it, then that, that's better be in the plan. Because if it's going to be like this next year, I'll save my comments.
We just need you to fix it, okay? Whatever you think is right, is what you do. If you need more money, that's when you come to us. Otherwise, I'm going to assume you're going to fix it.
Well, and again, like I said, we got grass on fairways on Turtle that we didn't even have last year, even with overseed. I can show you pictures of the fairways. They're much better right now than.
The grass is growing on the fairways. I don't think anybody would disagree with you. Nobody's talking about fairways now, they're only talking about greens.
I mean, it's just the process. We're going to warm, we're going to do what we need to do. I promise you that. And like I said, I'll put it in the budget, an asterisk, if we decided that we want to do it, that we're scared that we're not going to. I don't want, listen.
Jimmy, I don't want an asterisk in the budget if we decide. It's your course.
Jimmy, what he's saying is, fix it.
Got it.
That's what he's telling you.
I know.
It's your job, you fix it, and you will. Thank you.
Jimmy, can you give us an approximate date of turnaround where we can start seeing a difference?
Well, I mean, right now.
I can see a difference, but I know a lot of people can't.
You look in the greens right now, so all those areas that we're talking about that's holding water, there's new shoots already coming up there. So, we said, I told you what we did in the projects that we did this week. We did the two ninja times, and we did the spiking, and we did three top dressings in the last two weeks. And we're still going to keep doing our foliar. I mean, as soon as we get it, say 60s at night is when it's really going to start moving. But once I do the solid time is when it's really going to make a difference.
So are we talking April 15th, May 1st?
I feel that they'll be a lot better by the time we even get to, in two weeks. I mean, they're moving quick right now. You know?
Thank you.
Just fix it. I got you. Try and get the cost fixed before you do the practice range, or the practice range area.
What's the lifespan of a green?
Honestly, 12 to 15 years on Bermuda greens.
Okay.
You should be able to get out of them.
Anything else for Jimmy?
Yes, sir.
Michael, your backup.
Okay, we'll start off with a quick membership update. Not a whole lot of movement from last time. I told you, we're at 95% of budget at this point. We'll still see that go up a little bit as the year goes on. As I've been saying, you know, the whole year, I think we're going to be very close to reaching that goal. Golf courses have been real busy the last couple months, record rounds, to be honest. Seen a lot of traffic out there. We did have, last week, we had the rain out and then the cold day, and that kind of slowed down the averages a little bit, but we're still close to averaging about 400 rounds a day, which is, which is pretty good. Update on the Booker fence, I told you in the last meeting that we, or maybe not, wasn't in the meeting, but at least in my weekly report, that we met with Booker Fence about putting a fence up on the back loading dock and back by the keg room. Got that process rolling. We are on the schedule for May 11th, and I know that sounds like, I'm a little disappointed that's a little far off, because I want to get it done as soon as possible, but that's as far out as they are right now. They did say if they had something open up, they would try to get us in there earlier. As we've been talking about, our men's member guest is next week. There's currently 120 players in the field. With that being said, they have their banquet dinner and entertainment that Saturday, and the restaurant will be closed that day. Our last blast tournament is Thursday, March 31st. And then coming up, April 9th, is that annual Ridge Area Arc Kokomo event that we've been doing every year, and that will close the restaurant for that day as well. The AJGA is coming back again this year. They're playing April 8 through 10. The Minor League Golf Tour is coming back.
Excuse me, just.
Yes.
With the restaurant being closed, what availability of any kind of food for these AJGA, will there be? You going to open a snack shack? You ought to be doing something. You're not going to have anything available.
It will be closed. Well, the AJGA will play golf. We will not, we'll be closed for dinner. I'm sorry, I did not state that. We'll close later on in the day. Typically, the AJGA, well, there'll be folks that'll be coming in, but they're playing in the morning on that particular day, I believe. So they'll be able to get service for lunch. They do, last year, they did one dinner, or one, I should say, one meal for the kids, and it was a to-go lunch.
But I just.
Which is doable.
I just wanted something available for these people.
No, absolutely. But the restaurant will not close till later in the day.
Okay, go ahead.
Minor League Golf Tour is back on the 12th through the 14th of April. Our Easter buffet is April 17th. And then we do have a New Hope Tournament Saturday, April 23rd. That's pretty much it for the big events coming up, the end of March into April. Typically, right around Easter is when we start to see things slow down a bunch, as people start heading back north. I did want to mention to the board, if you were not there for the Custa Pin Center Dinner, we did do, we did do a nice deal of honoring Ms. Joan Cowan, who is our longest-standing member at the club. She's been a strong supporter of the club and a member for over 43 years. So the club purchased a nice shadow box, and we put a Deer Run flag in it with a nice little memento, thanking her for her longtime service and support of the club. So if you weren't there, it was really nice, and I think everybody there really enjoyed it. But that's all I have.
Mike, I got a request. Would you send the board an email with specific breakdowns of the type of memberships that we have this year, and how many have signed up for them versus last year?
No, I have not, but I'd be happy to.
I know you haven't done it yet, I'm asking you to do it.
Okay, yeah. So you want membership categories?
I just know each category of memberships, how many we have this year versus last year.
Okay.
Trends.
Do you want just one year prior, or?
I'm sorry?
Do you want just one year prior? I mean, yeah.
It's impacted by pandemic and previous years.
Yeah, it was.
I know, but I still want to see. Yeah, I know. Because we eliminated the 50.
Year over year, sure.
Yeah, just one year's fine.
Okay.
He's right about the pandemic. And then Jimmy, I'm sorry, I got a question for you. I forgot. On hole number 16, the one that you just put the cement down on the sidewalk, you guys did a very terrible job of that, from the standpoint of not, how did you redirect the cart traffic? We had a tough time figuring out which way to go.
I know.
Yeah, you guys, I mean, you just sectioned it off, dug it up, and left it when I was out there yesterday morning, and it was like a joke to get around it.
Well, we, I mean.
I'm just saying, you guys weren't thinking when you did it.
Well, what would we do? There was nowhere for them to really go.
I didn't say, where were you going to, but you should have figured out a way to redirect the carts. It's too much. Okay, let me ask you another question. On the same hole, all the rock that you put on the base there, what is the intention of that?
So when it rains, that bank keeps getting blown out. So the whole intention, we've got fabric underneath it, we put the rocks there, so when that water collects there now, it won't erode the bank anymore.
So it's just, that's the only part you're going to put the rock on?
Well, I mean, I'd love to do the whole thing.
Well, I mean, how do you think it looks?
I tell you what, I've been out there the last two days, and we've had nothing but compliments on all of it.
But does people realize that that's all it's going to be? You're not going to finish it off?
Well, they've asked if we're going to, and I've tried to communicate to them that we're not. I mean, that, right there, that spot in number 10 is where all the water collects and blows up, and that's where it washes out all the time.
So do you not think that maybe?
I would love to, I mean, we can definitely continue on it. I mean, it would definitely look better. I mean, I'd love to do number two, right there by the road. I think it'd be beautiful. I mean, it's definitely long-term, and you won't have to worry about the erosion.
Where'd all that rock come from?
I purchased it.
You bought it? Is it very expensive?
It's about $1,200 a load, so we got $2,400 in what we fixed so far.
So that's $2,400 right there?
Yes, sir.
Have you guys seen that?
I saw that. I can't say that, I saw the.
Yes, that's.
What'd you think? Should we finish it?
Jimmy, how much more would it cost to finish it?
I just think we got to watch, spend any kind of money on the golf course right now.
Well, what's the cost? You.
With what we've already spent.
Like.
Because it's just basically materials, right? Because the labor's here.
Right, so, I mean, there's no any additional costs still within our budget. I mean, it's not like it's above and beyond what we did, and I just tried to get the areas that are being impacted right now with the heavy rains. Last year, when I got here, they had a bunch of stuff piled up there, and just kept adding dirt to it, it just kept blowing out.
Just to add to that, so some of those areas, like behind 16 and over there, if those areas continue to erode, you're going to start to lose cart path and areas up by the green. So this was, I mean, $2,400 and a little bit of labor, but they've been trying to fix those banks repeatedly, over time, over time, over time. This is a permanent fix. We spent $2,400, we fixed two locations that are no longer going to erode in those areas. As we find other areas that need that, we, you know, we'll get to those as we do, but to me, in the long term, it's a cost savings to fix that erosion before you start losing cart paths and other stuff.
I'm going to see it differently.
Or playing area.
I'd probably see it differently than all you guys. I think it's unfinished. That's what it looks like to me.
Jimmy, how many more feet does need to be finished?
I think it would look a lot better if I went to the black pipe and at least wrapped it around in the corner.
Okay.
Where we just fixed the cart path. That's probably $6,000, $7,000.
Put it in the budget for next year? With an asterisk? Because I know Mr. Gilpin doesn't like it, so he'll be able to find it really easy.
I mean. I mean, if we want him to fix it, then let's tell him to fix it. I didn't notice it. I haven't seen it. When I was out there.
It looks good.
Okay.
I mean, I can try to finish that part.
I don't, put it in the budget. Don't spend any additional money on it this year.
Focus on the.
Yeah, focus on the.
You haven't spent additional.
No, ma'am, this has been in our, we got that.
Anything else for these guys, for the golf? Okay, thank you. General Counsel is not here. Duly noted that he should realize that the traffic on I-4 is always bad, and it's no excuse not to be at this meeting. Period.
Especially during spring break.
Anytime. The General Counsel is to be at every meeting. I know he can hear me, and he should hear this. Not acceptable.
And at the next meeting, if we do have an emergency, people will be able to chime in online, so at least we could ask some questions.
Not acceptable for the General Counsel. Not acceptable for the general counsel. General managers report.
I have a number of things on my report in writing. We have just some sampling we've been doing to do some professional development, water quality sampling, and that was a webinar we did at lunchtime, and there's no charge for that. Did have maintenance of traffic. Three utility staffers took that course. It's two days, three hundred and fifty dollars an employee, and we'll have a couple more people from roads and bridge and utilities taking that course next month, and we'll also be doing our first aid and CPR. Just a quick update on Deer Run irrigation. We finalized all the material purchases. Those costs continue to climb like another fifteen percent in the next few weeks, so that was a good move, getting those prices locked in on that pipe because it's just astronomical the way that those costs have gone up.
Good job.
And we're doing the, we'll have the contract executed. We're just doing some final touches on that and get that out of the way, and they're looking at June sixth start date with materials starting to be delivered at the end of May.
June sixth?
Yes, sir, that's the official start date.
When are we gonna see, hey, Mike, if we're starting the irrigation on June sixth, when are we gonna see a schedule on what you're doing?
So, right now, Carl's getting the contract, we just, he hasn't signed his part yet, so Chris, we're sending that out. We should have that next week as far as that goes. Then we're gonna have a meeting with him, sit down, get the schedules and get the scope of work.
When are we gonna see a schedule on what's going on?
Well, we'll just have, I mean, we gotta reschedule, I mean, June sixth is definitely the start date, so the main thing is doing.
If you don't. Yeah, it would seem to me you have to have a plan before you know when you're gonna start.
Well, we have to have a contract signed first to make sure. He hasn't even signed the contract yet.
I understand that. If, assuming we start on June sixth, when will we see the plan on how you're gonna handle the courses?
You're gonna see the plan prior to that, so hopefully next week. I mean, we gotta sit down with him and do the scope of work. We've already talked about, we've already come out and measured everything, we've already got the Tony, the designer and everything, so.
I'm not questioning the actual cost, I'm questioning how you're gonna handle the thirty-six holes because of what's gonna happen. That's what I'm asking. When we're gonna see a schedule on what's closing, what's opening, that type of thing.
Got you. We'll do that this week, how we're gonna do it. So our game plan is to start on the front nine. We were gonna originally start on the back nine, but he wants to start on the back nine and work back to the pump station because, so we're gonna start on the front nine on June sixth. We'll keep the back nine open, and we're gonna be able to, on the weekends, if we have events or whatever, we'll be able to reopen it.
All right, let's try it this way. The second meeting of April, I want you to present a schedule to us.
Yeah.
On what's gonna happen with the courses based on the irrigation on Deer. Is that acceptable?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I have a few other updates. I met with the county administrator and the assistant county administrator this past Friday to talk about the American Rescue Plan, grant opportunities through the federal program. They still have some residual money and a few projects that they have that the government came back and said those don't qualify, so there is some money there. And yesterday, I met with Liz Barber, she's a grant coordinator with the county, and I'm gonna submit five project proposals to them next week, following the forty-four pages of criteria in their manual. This is like going to work with FEMA, the amount of paperwork, but we're gonna put in for some stormwater projects, some wastewater projects, and also for emergency generators, and just look at the buzzwords and what they like to fund, and put five in and work with Liz and see if we can get some money out of the process.
Excellent.
So we're moving forward with that, and also in July, we'll be moving forward with putting in an application to the Water Management District for Turtle Run for next year. If we move forward with the budget, it was delayed until next year, but we'll put that money in the budget. They'll typically do cost share for efficiencies, meaning they could put fifty, seventy-five thousand dollars toward that project for controllers or efficient valves, that kind of thing.
You're talking about the green loops?
Yep.
Excellent.
Yep, so that's another, and that money's basically a fifty-fifty cost share, so if we're putting money into the loop, they'll match us, and the fact that we put the two million dollars to increase efficiencies on Deer Run, that looks real good when you put a grant application into them, because that's all in the same conservation plan the golf course folks put together to increase efficiencies and reduce water use. Had some discussions about the website. I have two firms in town, MSP Marketing on Ridgewood, and also a firm called Get Fish Slapped, that came highly recommended, and I'm getting a proposal form for each, and they said, what do you wanna do to your website? And I said, start over. So, and we also wanna tie this in because the fellow that does the billboard, I don't know how many of you've seen that lit billboard, Alan Twenty-Six?
Yeah.
I mean, it's a nice graphic, but that guy's a graphic designer, and what we wanna do is key him in with some of this, but also when we do updates to our website, push that at the same time to him so he can update anything on that sign.
Well, the website's important.
Oh, yeah, very important, and we wanna make it much more, much more usable, and it's just been cobbled together for so many years that the links don't work together, and people add things, and what it's supposed to do, it really doesn't. It's just outdated. Also, the board, two meetings back, it approved some utility funding, and one I am in there was a rate study. So today, we just finished increasing the connection fees. These are the base rates. That scope of work has been signed with the consultants. We'll expect to have that draft in sixty days and put, make it part of the budget process. Our goal is to bring our rates up so that we're self-sufficient utilities, that we can support our operations, but we're not trying to be the number one in the area. We wanna push our rates up more to the middle of the pack instead of being at the bottom. Also had a staffer from Florida World Water come in this week, and he's doing an energy assessment of our facilities, our water and wastewater plants, and they look at the draws and the amperage and when we're running our peak times, and put together a plan on how we can reduce our energy consumption. And some things are even like, you look at the draws on motors, the high amps it takes, maybe it's worth it, put a soft start in there, variable frequency drive, which reduces consumption, reduces wear on the equipment, but this is a service they offer free of charge. It takes some of the time from Joey and I to pull old electric bills and meet with the guy in the field and show him, but again, it's a free service, and if it's something, we'll look at the report and can save us money, we'll move forward with it. And they also are gonna assist us with some mapping, you know, of our meter locations that we can use for a number of things. So, and also, I put on your desk, we started to work on the update of the strategic plan, and what we're doing with this is we have a strategic plan and it shows our goals, but in some cases, it does not show what we've done to accomplish that goal. And you'll see on the second page, you know, we have one of the threats here was potential irrigation failure for Deer Run. Well, we have the replacement irrigation system was funded at two point two million with the work to begin June one, and when that's done, we'll update it. On the, on the front end, we had weakness on aging infrastructure, you know, across the board, water sewer, stormwater, roads, and have the actions taken, which is the connection fee study, the rate study, and the facilities plan, so.
We didn't get that.
I think they're missing the second.
Wish I hadn't found it yet.
I got it.
So we got multiple copies.
Oh, it's on the back.
Oh, I didn't pick one up as we came in. Well, plus it's in here.
I got this page. What's the list though?
Well, that, that is some information too, that I was going back and looking at some of the previous strategic plans. It was kind of interesting because we found the board getting together and ranking all these priorities and then drafting it up, and it's kind of interesting because back then, infrastructure was like the bottom of the page.
All right, so let me.
But assuming the goal is at the top of the page, I really, I really attached this on there.
So when are we gonna see your recommendations for the action plan? This is only one page. Surely it's more than that.
Yeah, well, those are the action items that will be accomplished if we go to the next level of updates, but what we'll do is we'll be updating that during the budget process.
I thought you were gonna present to us a strategic action plan at this meeting. Did I miss it?
Yes, sir, all I was doing was updating our plan on the things that will be accomplished.
So what, what are we gonna do for a plan going forward?
Let's plan go forward over the next several months as we go through the budget processes for those dollars in place, and we'll implement that to the plan and say.
Of where we are.
Budget, this is what we're gonna do. Plan has goals, but it doesn't have objectives how we're gonna finish it at this point, so then if you go in and take the plan like here, we've done the rate study, we've done the SOLOs plan, we'll keep adding updates over to the.
So when will I see your final copy? June?
I would say the final would be close to the end of the budget year for a final update with strategic plan, which would be our strategic plan for up by twenty-two and twenty-three. But I've got some of this information in there because it's interesting, you know, I looked at the older strategic plans that came in two thousand and nine, and how the board approached it, and what they recognized is some real issues that they need a real approach. And then there were also some older plans done by Julian Belion, who is engineer here, talking about sidewalks and street lanes. And what you see in these historical plans though, is a lot of it's the same things we're talking about right now.
So you're basically saying that the strategic action plan's gonna come from the capital?
It's gonna come from the capital and the budget, as we develop that with the strategic plan, here's our goals, okay, how we can budget, budget to budget, say, okay, how we accomplish this, but budgeting to address them. So the strategic plan drives the budget, just going the other way, the budget drives the strategic plan.
Which way are we going?
We're going both ways.
Okay.
Because there's some things in the strategic plan where we've done a good job so far of addressing the infrastructure on the utility side.
I thought, what I'd like to see is what we had as a strategic plan and what you intend you get to.
Yeah, that's just a page.
This is just one.
That's one of the pages.
But it was like six, seven pages long, if I'm remembering right?
Yeah, half on two.
Well, I thought we were gonna update that.
Updates old memory to you like that, or using for a guy on the project.
Right, so we should update that and bring it to the board before the budget meeting starts, so we should have that on April first. Very big day.
And that's, that's what I hope too, is as we move through the budget, why are we doing this? Well, here's our strategic goal, this is where we're gonna spend the money, you're spending money where your mouth is.
Okay, so on April first, you're gonna give us an updated, a strategic plan that we can review for the next meeting, which is when we start the capital.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do you have anything else to add, Chris?
I think a concern we should have in the next day or two, they're just waiting on the permit with Baker Septic to redo the drain field on the golf course on Turtle. So, but they should be out Monday or Tuesday to get that taken care of, and it'll be brand new.
Good. Anything else?
We were going to talk in detail today, and we're gonna postpone it until April first with code enforcement and also security. The reports are in there, but we're gonna have Bob come in and give an overview, and I have on your desk background information on our code enforcement, and I painted this to you when I, when I met with him individually, but it basically shows, you know, our section nine point one oh two of what code enforcement can and can't do, and I wanna bring Bob in and have him tell you what's working with his job, what isn't working, and any recommendations. And I also asked him to bring a code enforcement professional that worked with the district in two thousand and nineteen to update the code enforcement rules, to get him to come to the meeting, because he has perspective with other districts and what the code enforcement's going direction.
So I would, I would like each of you guys on board to become familiar with this, because this is pretty much his report card on what he's held responsible for, so when we talk at the next meeting, he won't be up to date on it, and this is what we're gonna challenge him on, what he needs to do to enforce these rules and regulations that we have in place.
And I think we'll, we'll take all the input from the board after talking with Bob, and maybe we can look at some efficiencies with them working with the security crew and move forward from there. Another thing we'll do is we have kind of an out-of-date code enforcement brochure for the district, and anything new we wanna do, we'll put in there, but also, this talks about what the district does, but doesn't say anything about the county. And a lot of times when people call us, we go, no, that's the county, we don't have the authority to do that. So we're gonna put a section, here's what the district's responsible for, here's what the county's responsible for, and also have the phone number and contact information for the county.
Okay, anything else?
No, sir, that is all I have today.
Nothing? Oh, he's not here.
Yeah, he has, he has his report there, but he's gonna come up on April first with Bob, because so much of the stuff that they do, they interact, so.
District engineer?
That's Drew.
Mr. Drew.
We had a number of things he wanted to talk about, and they're listed on here.
Excuse me, pardon my voice, I got, I got that sign of strange today.
You gotta speak in.
There you go. Sorry about that. I guess the first thing on the list was to update the six-year.
I'm gonna switch the sounds, the sound's a little louder.
All right. All right, can you hear me? Oh, that's good. First thing on the list is the six-year or five-year pavement update. I was looking through the, the board packet, and it looks like we might have an older revision. I don't know if it starts with the proper fiscal year. The correct one starts twenty-two, twenty-three. I don't know if you'll have that in front of you or not.
Saw it someplace.
Just above the, very end of the packet, last three pages.
Yeah, last two pages.
Does it say, what's it start with on the top year?
Twenty-one.
Okay, so it might, it's an older version.
Yeah.
I have the newer version on my phone. I can email it to y'all, or we can rescind it back out. I'll just go over, it's not changed a whole lot since that one, but we, we've updated it to correct what we've changed, because every year, we'll assess the roads, and if we find one that we need to do, that's more, higher priority, we'll adjust it as we go. But we try to follow our plan as best we can every year. The twenty-two, twenty-three, we're gonna start with the unit, unit thirteen over here with Villa Bella and Mercato, Luca Dendro, I can't pronounce half of these, Cadagua, Catalina, Perugia, Saria, and Edgewater. That's what we revised from the previous year.
Where are you at?
I, those, that's an older, that's an older revision. I don't think the latest one, yeah, I don't think the latest one got attached to the, the board packet.
After all this, we don't have the right information. So what year are we at, are you at right now, Drew?
I'm, I'm at twenty-two, twenty-three, but I know that's changed, oh, I'll reference the one that was attached to the board packet.
I'm sorry, why, why twenty-two, twenty-three? Doesn't solve in Davia? No?
That, we.
You don't have the right report?
That's correct, that's what I.
A month, and we don't have the right report? You gotta be kidding me. Why don't we have the right report?
I have no idea. I, I looked, I checked the packet. I didn't, I sent the latest, the latest one back in, was it January, December when we asked for it originally? I get, I think an old one got attached to the board packet, I don't know.
Well, I don't wanna discuss it if I can't see it.
Okay.
You're gonna have to come April fifth and present it again.
Okay.
With the right, with the right information.
All right.
This is, this is not acceptable.
I'll, I'll find out. I was looking and I saw that date, so we'll see, but the, the second page that has the roads to be completed, planned work date, January two thousand and twenty-two, that's accurate, the work going on right now. That's the last.
I want, I want, I want the good report, April first, we'll go over it then, and I expect it to be the right report, which is what I expected today.
Um, do you still, would you still like to go over the, the current, current project page? That's the one that's at the last of all those roads, what we're, what we're paving this year, or what we've completed.
Does it start with El Cantera? No, it starts with.
Yes, yes, it does. That, that is what we had on the list to complete this year, well, the previous fiscal year and this year. All the roads on the top half are all completed except, I believe they are all done. I just wanted to verify we did get all of them, but all the roads on the first fiscal year, two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one are all complete. The contractor is, they are doing prep work today, because they've remobilized to get everything going again. They're gonna start in unit five, and that's gonna be the second group of roads for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-two. Those are gonna be starting next, the plan is to start next week with actual paving, but today they're doing prep work, making sure everything's, everything's mobilized. They might start milling today on some of the driveway tie-ins.
What do you show as those roads? I'm just making sure that we're looking at the right sheet.
On, on that last one's El Rado, Fonseca, Garienda, Orlando.
Yeah. Loretto, Mendoza, Florida.
Correct.
Granada.
Correct, correct.
So they're prepping those today?
They're prepping, they're starting in unit five doing prep today. I think they're gonna continue prep the beginning of the week, and they're gonna try to start paving, I think, midweek to end week. I did notify them that they do need to let the county know about the garbage pickup on Thursday, just to remind them, because I know we've had issues in the past. The, the striping is all done on the first group of roads, except for a portion of Cortez, north into Cortez. Their striping guy missed it, so they're gonna come back out when they stripe these roads and continue that and finish it. We did have a pay request on it, and we, we did deduct out the things that were not fixed, but they are gonna come back and do the corrections on the first group.
The first group is where we had the problems with, right?
Correct.
They're, they're being corrected?
Yes, they're gonna be doing that next week when they, when they get all the equipment out here and get everything when they start paving.
Okay.
It's gonna be a combination of, they're either gonna be heating it and refloing some of it, some of it they're gonna mill out and redo, but they're gonna take care of it.
And you personally go to inspect to make sure everything is done the way it should?
I will, I will be out here multiple times every day next week, or at least that's what I plan to do, unless someone directs me otherwise, but I will be out here. And I did let George know that they'll be out as well.
What about the thing on Granada? That wavy piece of pavement that they put in?
Correct. I was, I've talked with KDL, which did the repair there originally, and I've talked with Excavation Point. KDL has reached out to Excavation Point to go in and correct the road. He's going to be paying them to come in and fix it. That way he doesn't have a scheduling conflict and you don't have two contractors trying to work on the same roads, they don't point fingers. So Excavation Point will be fixing the road. I think I saw their truck out there this morning. I think they were trying to.
So that should be done in the next month?
Correct. Well, assuming everything goes to plan and they don't have any other, but it's, they plan on being done by the end of next week or the week after. That is their intent from what they told me. I don't want to guarantee anything because we never know, issues might occur or.
And you'll be out there overseeing it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. How are you determining what roads to do? Through visuals?
Most of it's visual and/or complaint driven, or if we have resident or board member staff, anything that brings up, or if we're driving over the road and there's millions of potholes where we're trying to get it higher on the list. Like I said before, none of these lists are set in stone, so if something we deem, like if we find we need, we missed the road somewhere along the lines and we need to bump it up, we try to get it into that, that next year's paving lists if we can't move it into the current year. But we try not to deviate from it. And if you see anything that you want to input information to, or you think that we're, okay, why are we doing this group of roads down here? Can we move it up a year? That's completely fine. It's, we've, I believe we've gotten most of the terrible roads taken care of already in the district. I'm not saying everything's perfect by no means, but a lot of the bad roads we've gotten paved already or we're fixing to get done this year.
Well, I don't know the condition of a lot of these streets that are out there, but like Cremona I used to live on, and I don't see where Cremona's all that bad, but I might get some feedback from somebody else. But I can tell you, Devil Beach West is in terrible shape. And I know a lot of that's due to the construction, and I haven't been saying anything because until the trucks get out of there, there's no sense trying to redo the corners.
Right, I think we got three new.
But I mean, I would imagine Ignacio and those where all that contract work been going on are in terrible shape.
Right, there's.
And it just, I think some of these things need to be evaluated. With all the construction that's going on, there's a lot of breakdown that I think should be getting focused on rather than repaving, complete roads that aren't in that bad a shape. That's just an opinion.
And that's, that's something we, like I said, we can adjust that if that's what you'd like to do. I know we were trying to avoid the, it's a, honestly, it's a mixed bag on what you do, whether or not you try to get in and pave before the road gets completely destroyed or if you let the contractors do their damage. A lot of the roads in the district were paved many years ago and they, I don't want to say we neglected them, but we didn't do any work to them because there were no houses on them and we didn't have budget most of the time to do any paving. And a lot of the roads are an inch or thinner in thickness on asphalt, so that's extremely substandard. So honestly, if we had money to do all of them that were that thin, I would say do them all, but we definitely can adjust it if we want to, if we want to take, I say, gamble and pave some of those ahead of time, that, like I said, we don't have any really bad roads except those that are getting worked on now. So if we want to, we want to tackle that area early, we can do that sooner than later.
Well, it's also the material they use in the past.
Right.
Right?
Right.
Explain to them that, I don't think these guys understand.
Well, you got, you got multiple things, you got micro-surface that we have sitting on the roads which break up and make things worse. Your, like I said before, your thickness, your material thickness is usually you're at an inch if you're lucky. We've had some potholes that we've gone even out back that are built in the 90s when we've gone out there. I don't even think it was three quarters of an inch thick on the asphalt, so.
What it is, what was, Julian used a different material and, you know, he just wanted to make them possible, I guess.
That and the base material back then wasn't required to be as thick. So you got, there's a lot of things working against us, but that's.
I, listen, I, to Craig's point, 2022, 23, you've got three and a half miles worth of recommendations.
Correct.
If, if it comes down to October and there's something else that needs to be done that's important, you take, you have to make adjustments.
Right, right, that's what we do.
It's a live plan.
Correct.
I just wanted to make sure we had a plan.
Correct, okay.
That we could see. Adjustments, that, that should be just common. I mean, you know.
Right.
If we need to do something, we need to do it.
And that's, that's why I said we can, we can definitely move in.
The key is not to let what happened last year happen this, going forward, which is we did nothing.
Correct, that was, that was a lot of.
There was nothing.
Technical issues, but it's.
Well, we don't, that's not going to happen going forward, right?
That is the plan, yes. As long as we have our own, we have our own contract if we need to use our piggyback or if we need to put it out to bid, we can still do that too. I know we had.
We understand this is a moving topic, so we're fine with that. Can you give us an update on the Pink Palace situation?
I went and looked at it, as soon as I left the board meeting, I guess that was two board meetings ago. There is erosion right there next to the downfall pipe that goes underneath their driveway. I don't know if any of y'all looked at it or have seen it over the past few years, but underside of their driveway is washing out, which that's where a lot of that erosion is coming from. Their steel culvert is failing, which I think they've already known that for a long time. I believe when Mike was still working for the district, we've, I think, looked at it multiple times.
Many times.
I know they were trying to get the district to help them out to fix it, but I did get a quote from KDL. I think it was just shy of $6,000, around $5,500 to clean everything out around there and re-sawed about 80 feet of the roadway ditch there. I know that's what they asked us to do. We just need to make sure they know if we get that cleaned out, there's going to be more erosion as soon as it starts raining again if they don't fix their, their culvert issue in their driveway. Because right now it's.
So we can fix the problem for $6,000, but they're going to have more of a problem because we do it.
Correct, we're, alls we're doing is cleaning and, we're cleaning and sodding, fixing.
What I think we should do is to, Chris, we should communicate that to whoever the gentleman was that came here.
Chris Patton.
And tell him, here's your options, we clean it out, this is what's going to happen, or you fix it and then we'll clean it out. And let him tell us.
In defense for Drew, we have done that. Okay? We have done that three times.
Well, obviously, you didn't get it, obviously, you didn't get an answer, didn't you?
I understand that, we've done that three times.
You did not get an answer, did you, Mike?
Yeah, we did get an answer. They were going to fix it.
Mike, please.
They were supposed to fix it, right?
Please. Go to him, use your options, get an answer, and we'll proceed.
Okay, good.
I agree.
Do you want to comment on the Barbarossa and the other situation, that email that you had sent?
Oh, the, you're talking about the drainage and the sewer work? I was just listening on the meeting, I just, I, most of my comments were in the email that got, got attached to the packet. I just want to let you know that we were aware of the additional issues. The main reason we got a quote to clean the rest of it on Florida Avenue, if we were able to, that's something we would like to do, but I know I didn't, I didn't want to put that in the scope of work because it's, we don't have legal, I don't think we have legal authority unless David's gotten back to you, Chris.
Yeah, I'm, I'm working on it, I sent a letter to the property owners.
Okay.
Because there, there is an old ditch there for drainage that we could go in and maintain. Obviously, if they developed that parcel, I think they would probably put a pipe on the property line.
Right, correct.
But we can go in there and maintain the ditch.
Right. But currently, we don't have any legal authority to just go and do it. I know if we got a letter from the owner, we just need to make sure we don't just send somebody in there and blitz something that we don't have. Most of the areas we have easements, but on Barbarossa and Almeria, that was more of a timing thing on why we didn't, we didn't put everything out all at once. I know we were, we were talking about it in our meetings, that we wanted to go ahead and get the drainage stuff started and we were, we were fully aware about the pipe. And I think Joey even mentioned, after we were, started moving, we got more information that, I think you said you have, we've had like three or four leaks back there the past year in that area. So we're, we're, we're aware of it, it was just, the timing didn't work out to get everything brought all at one time. I know we wanted to get moving prior to, but we were, we were working towards that. I know, I think we had three or four fences and sheds that the contractor made us aware of too that are in the way. So everything is, everything's going along and I think Chris said we already have had contact with the two or three of the owners.
Three of the property owners we've talked to because they have sheds and fences in the way and that they understand that, know that they were in the way and that they're in the right of way.
Okay.
And they're making plans to move them. And we'll be, we're moving forward.
So you guys are working together to get this done? Is that what you're telling us?
Yes, sir. We're about 80% done with the force main. I stopped by this morning. They've got all the services in so far. I think they have a couple of, well, it's minor, minor issues with existing services. I think they were going to have Joey go out and check, but they kind of insinuated they might be done today or tomorrow, or Monday if they're not working tomorrow, but.
Anything else?
Did y'all want to go over, I guess that's later, the recycling bin thing? That's, that's going to be the later portion.
The location for the recycling?
Yeah.
Yeah, you guys, there was a map?
Yep, in the back.
In the book, in the very back.
Excuse me, I have a question. Have we decided as a board that we want a recycling place out here?
No.
Okay.
No, we haven't.
Wouldn't that be the first thing to do?
No, we're not, it's not been offered to us and we've not decided, but we asked for them to go, see if we decided to go with it, what the location, what their recommendation would be. So there's nothing set in concrete.
So do we want it or not?
Huh?
So do we want it? Don't we have to vote to put it in or not? I mean, I don't know, so just a question.
We have not decided whether we want it or not, it hasn't been offered to us.
Okay.
The question is, does anybody have any feeling for this? It doesn't necessarily, at this point, we're not going, doing anything with it. But if we were to get the recycle bin, which we don't know yet.
Okay.
This is the location that they've come up?
Well, that's the previous location.
That's the previous location.
Yeah, we.
That's all that is.
Yeah, we supplied, we gave three suggestions, which they're not, of course, they're not set in stone, but just the existing location would be probably the least cost of, least cost to the district. And it kind of sounds like the county, I don't know who's talked with them, I don't know if the county's going to put any money towards it or not, if they.
They put up the fencing and everything. All we do is provide the site.
Right. I thought it gave you no cost to us.
Right.
Okay, that's what.
But where's the other sites?
Yeah, where's the other two sites?
The other site, they were just in the body of the email. One of them, I was suggesting, try to stick it closer to the maintenance facility. There's a vacant, we have a vacant lot between the Century Link and the driveway into the maintenance facility. I was just trying to think of ways, we're places, I'm not saying that's a good place for it. The other one would be up near the north entrance off of Ponce and Frontage, because we already own that property and there's already a portion of a driveway left there. I was just thinking of least costs to the district, assuming the county, like you said, the county's supposed to pay for all of it.
That's what they said, I mean, I thought.
But realistically, there's no good place, there's not going to be an ice sword in my mind, but I, that's up, if they put a nice privacy fence, that's up to y'all to decide, but there's no convenient place unless we try to stick it out back, which we did still have to. They, they mentioned that we would have to be policing it and keeping up with it and picking up trash and.
Yeah, have you heard, I heard that where, I don't know if this is true, but where they've already started, they're having trouble with people when their clothes dumping stuff there around the fence. And, I mean, this is just something that, you know, I, I would just assume if we don't find a good place, just a vote it, that we're not going to have it because wherever this thing goes, there's going to be furniture, there's going to be people that want to bring their recycle and it's not open, they're going to dump it there. I mean, this is going to be an absolute nightmare. And the last place I would put it is up where it used to be.
Right.
Yeah.
If you guys want to decide not to proceed with this, let's just take an informal vote and we can go on that basis. You want to do that?
Yes. I know that we do not proceed with the recycle.
Oh, second.
They don't have, this is an informal vote. Because it's not. What do you think?
I don't think we should.
Well, how important is it to the district? To the people, to the residents? I don't know.
Well.
From a county perspective, the reason they've got us involved is they said if Avon Park turns them down, that's why we're looking that we would be the next place.
Then we give everybody from Avon.
So we were just looking at, if they come to us, do we have any sites available and get the discussion going before they say, do you want it? Because then we could tell them, no, we don't.
I mean, I don't even know if our residents would want.
I don't, to Mike's point, that, that's the biggest concern I would have.
Yeah.
The collection of miscellaneous merchandise when it's not open.
Well, that's what happened last time. I mean, I mean, there was a ton of labor that we used from our own people to go clean that up all the time. People just dump stuff and, you know, we're not.
So if you guys, so how, obviously, how would you go?
I wouldn't put one.
I, I don't want it.
I don't want one.
Okay, we don't want one, so we'll stop that conversation going forward. Now, if you all hear back, feedback from people who live in, in the community and they say something different, we have to face reality.
Right.
And go forward.
Right.
Until we hear different, we're going to go with the assumption we're not going to do it.
Well, I know I'm going to hear different, but I don't, I don't. I live with someone that thinks we should have it. And I don't, and I don't, so that's, so don't tell her I voted.
I'll be the first to tell her.
Okay, anything else, Drew? Thank you, Drew.
Thank you.
Thank you. See you next meeting, huh?
Community services.
Right. Did you want to say something?
What? Oh, I'm sorry, do we do?
I don't know, he just raised his hand.
Comments about the trash? I think you would have been a candidate for having it on property. Why did the government have it on their own property? That's my comment.
Thank you.
Community services.
Good morning, supervisors. All of you, all of you, probably with the exception of Mr. Hurley, because I have not updated my list, so I apologize, should have received an email yesterday that had an image of the new signs to be put in the dog park. They're 36 inches tall by 30 inches wide, so it's a pretty good size. It is going to reiterate the rules within the dog park. It has bolded at the bottom and in a different color as well, the number for security that they should call to report any issues or misuse. So we ordered four of those signs, two for each of the dog parks. It's very similar, it's going to be the same rules that they see when they come into the park, but that way they're posted within the park as well because one thing we kind of discussed is you pass the rules on the way in and unless you have a photographic memory, you're not going to remember every single one of those rules while you're standing in there. So we went ahead and put those, or reiterated those on the signs so that they'll be shown in the dog park as well. And like I said, we did order four, so there will be two in the small dog park and two in the large dog park. Those have been ordered, have been received. Maintenance staff picked those up and they, I'm expecting them to be installed either today or early next week.
Thank you. You were supposed to bring to us today, we're going to talk about violations, people abusing the rules and regulations.
So at the last meeting, my understanding was that we discussed what we were going to do was have them call security, which is why we put that on the signs, that if they're there physically and there's someone misusing the park, they need to call security or report it to the district office and we would do it as we do with any other, sorry, I'm kind of buzzing, we would do it.
Yeah. I thought we were, so if somebody violates the policies, what do we do to them? Slap them on the hand? Tell them good luck? That, that's what I thought we were gonna do is what, what are the, like we have in golf, if somebody violates the policy at the restaurant or something, we have a, uh, three or step, four steps, I can't remember what it is, on what happens to the individual. I thought that was what we discussed, what we're gonna do on the dogs, uh, dog situation.
Okay, I'm sorry, then I misunderstood. I, I mean, sorry, I'm kind of, kind of. My, that one's really low. My suggestion would be that, um, I mean, like we said, it would get reported to security and it would be a matter of how many strikes do we want to give someone before we trespass them from the dog park.
I understand that, but we don't have anything in writing for this. That's what I thought we were gonna try and get.
We put that together, we do have, you know, the dog park rules, but the penalty side of it.
Right.
That's what we discussed in the meeting, that we're gonna talk about the penalty side.
We'll just drop one and mimic.
Perhaps we'll talk about the penalty side on April fifth.
Yeah, we can. I'll have it in an email to you well before that, but if we want to discuss it in the meeting, then that's.
We have to agree to it, because there's nothing in writing right now. It's your recommendation on what they should be.
Understood.
Okay. Okay, we'll do that for April fifth. Uh, does anybody, could you have an update on CPR classes for the employees? You've done very well as far as, uh, the classes on April fifth for the, uh, uh, people living in the district. But have we done anything for the employees yet? Because you said that was a different type of training.
That is a different type of training. My understanding, um, is that Kelly has reached out to them to go ahead and get that scheduled, for the recreation employees. So everyone, all of my employees that are at the pool, we will have that finished with them. My understanding is Kelly's already got that scheduled.
Okay, so you're working on that. And then, can we talk a couple of minutes about the newsletter?
Sure.
This newsletter, in my opinion, no offense to anybody, I know you guys try your hardest. It, it really, it's more of an advertising brochure in a lot of ways. And I think we need to,
X substance.
Come up with a strategy on what we really want to communicate to the public.
Okay.
And how often we want to communicate to the public. And so my, my challenge to you would be to kind of sit back and talk to your people and see what you think, you know, what, what a good newsletter would look, what, what people would appreciate hearing. For example, the golf committee, they have no way to communicate anything to anybody. Or they haven't so far. I mean, they, they send an email out, blah, 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 but, you know, that would be a good article in, in our newsletter, as to what's happening. I think something about the restaurant every month. Or every time we have a, an addition, should be in the newsletter, talking up the restaurant, not the golf, the restaurant. So I just think we need to look at it and come up with a, a plan and maybe, and I know it's probably gonna cost more money, I understand that. But certainly come up with a plan on something that we would be proud of and what it's gonna take to get it done. And maybe it's, like I said, instead of doing it every month, maybe it's every, every other month.
Sure.
And maybe we need to hire, you know, I'll even go as far as maybe we need to hire a twenty-hour person to run the damn thing. I, you know, I don't know, but I need you to start the ball, lay a foundation for us to consider and see if we want to proceed. Because right now, what we're doing now, is not as good as it could be.
Understood.
Anybody have anything else? Any public comments? I keep forgetting to do that. Yeah, sir.
Good morning, Mark Camp. Supervisors and, uh, district personnel. I just had a, a couple of questions, observations, and maybe some comments. Last meeting, I spoke, pretty much, I was outspoken about the golf operations and the greens. And I'm happy to hear that there's a little bit of a plan put in place. Hopefully, it works. I'm praying it works anyway. I don't know how long we'll give it before we make the next step, uh, as to try to improve it, because I know the cost of greens is, is extremely high. We've had a replacement in the past. That's why we replaced fifteen is because of a little bit of a delay. Uh, but in any case, there's a plan in place and I appreciate that. And, uh, hopefully, everything will go well with them. A question I have, and I don't know who can answer this, wh- when we have this, we have a lot of great technology here and we have this now we go to meeting platform. And is there somebody in charge of this? Who, who oversees this?
Oversees what?
Okay, okay. Okay, and, and you need to help me here for a second. You indicated that you had some people online that could hear, but you don't have the cables for audio, uh, for video. How did you verify that they were online?
You can, you can see them online, the people, and if you want their picture, if they turn their camera on, you can chat with them.
Okay, the reason, and, and the reason I ask that question, maybe I'll have to come and sit down with somebody from your office. It's kind of strange because I have an advanced degree in technology from BU, but, uh, one of the things is I tried it on three different platforms today, on Windows-based and iOS-based. And I even tried it on the phone, and I took screenshots of everything that I was getting. And it kept on saying it was waiting for the moderator and the moderator being yourself, Chris. So I, that's why I was wondering who allows somebody in.
Typically, we don't, don't use that to keep people out. And moderators, if you're having a meeting and want to restrict people's access to it.
Right.
The way we would restrict access is we would just mute that person. You know, we don't like to sit there and have to grant permission for people to attend the meeting. So if that's, if that moderator function's on, it's on and air.
Well, perhaps, yeah, perhaps that, I, I mean, I don't know if you guys test this, I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to, because that's the reason I'm here. I tried it from home and it, and it didn't work. And I tried it for a half an hour, and like I said, I took screenshots of all of the comments. So it said it was waiting on you. So anyway, I'll come into the office and who do I sit down with? Okay, fantastic. I appreciate that.
We ran a test too, and I'm, I'm really sorry with that cable. It's just a sound out cable that wasn't working. Otherwise, we could have people, you know, speaking or.
But, but if I understand Mark right, he couldn't even get.
I couldn't even get into the system, is all I'm saying, okay? And, and so obvi- obviously, I must be doing something wrong. So somebody's gonna have to be able to show me. Okay, thank you very much. And, and, and the general observation I have, and I appreciate it, is we've gone through this a little bit before, but it would be helpful for people to speak into the mics as well as when they get up and, and address the board or the district to, to mention their name. I mean, that's typically been the protocol in the past. But, and I'm not picking on you, Chris, but you stood over in front of the board over there for about three, three to five minutes having a discussion. I don't know if the audio will be picked up on that. So to, to a benefit of the people that might be listening, that might just be something that you could look at and make sure you continue to speak into the, uh, mics. Overall, I'm glad, you guys are doing a great job and hopefully we'll see some progress. Thank you.
And today, we, we did turn on the transcript function for that go-to-meeting. So when you view it now, you could actually split your screen and watch it. And then the transcript and the transcripts timestamped also when those items come up.
Fantastic.
So we'll have a written transcript. We hope how the voice recognition works on it to go with the video.
Oh, great, great. Well, I'm happy to see that they are getting the, the videos up and the minutes in a timely fashion. Thanks again.
Any other questions?
Bill Norcross, resident, um, you can hear me now, right? That's nice. Uh, that newsletter that, uh, you brought up, I, I think is a great idea to have a little bit more additional information. Uh, perhaps, Jimmy, uh, his plans for the golf course. I think that, uh, he should be, that would be an outlet for him to get the general public in, in touch with what's happening, because they, I think they're real pretty upset right now. But also, um, we're talking about the, uh, driving range, um, problems. I couldn't believe somebody cut a piece of the Astro turf out. I really, I mean, they couldn't take an old rug or something and use, but they had to cut out a section. We have missing baskets, which I have a good solution for, uh, because you can buy a, uh, three packet of, uh, laundry basket type of things like that would hold golf balls. Simple, simple remedy if there's no baskets available. But the suggestion at one time was to have, uh, security cameras. And why it hasn't been done, I cannot understand. I really can't. Because you've got, you've got a constant problem out there.
We are not gonna have security cameras. And if you're concerned about buckets and things of that nature, that's not the board's, we don't deal with that kind of stuff. You can deal with the golf club on that. I'm not getting involved with the bucket and stuff like that. It's not for the board.
You don't think that, that, how do we direct the, the problem and the solution? Do we direct it to Mike?
The golf club should be able to take care of their own buckets, not the board.
All right, well, I, I, I tell you, you know, we've looked at the rope lineup on the right-hand side of the, the golf course, and it has been angled so that it's almost aimed at that tree by the, that, the practice chip, chipping area. And I tell you what, somebody's gonna get brained.
I'm sorry to bring this up, but you brought that up now. It's the third time I've heard it. You brought it up at the golf committee. We are aware of your challenge.
I know, but the, the solution, they weren't interested.
The board does not get involved in this stuff, I'm sorry.
Well, I'm sorry. If, if somebody gets hurt, I'm just warning you. That's all.
You can warn me all you want. Utility.
All right, nothing too exciting. Um, we have posted one full-time utility technician position in a dual license operator position. We currently posted them to Indeed as well as the Florida Water Pollution Control Operators Association. And at the new pay rate that we just, uh, implemented, we are definitely seeing a larger number of applicants coming in. And it's, it's a good thing. Um, also, two of the utility technicians have submitted applications to DEP for their wastewater level C licenses and are waiting for approval and scheduling. Also, since the last meeting, we've had five more connections for water and wastewater. And then I guess the biggest thing for this report is, uh, we have, and I've attached a quote from Dataflow Systems for a SCADA server that is, uh, works with the lift stations on, uh, in the district. And the server is outdated, um, and needs a repair. We do have a loner server in there at the moment, uh, as of February eleventh. But anyway, the, the quote is attached to the back and it will be, it's in progress now. And that'll, uh, give us our communications to and from. Sorry, I, all right, well, uh, it is in process and, um.
What is the quote?
It's for, fifty-nine sixty. Um, it's for these two servers, the software, the operating system, the open source database, and the configurations with all of the three years worth of data that it'll save, that we can go back and utilize if we have any spills or anything for DP.
Five, five thousand nine hundred and sixty.
Yes, sir.
Just in the budget?
Yeah.
Senator Peter.
As far as I'm concerned.
Oh, yeah, we, we're moving forward with it. One thing, it's, it's automation. Instead of relying on those lights and alarms, you know, and someone calling the station, and this is basically sending that information, there's a problem to the funds. So the person that's on call, he can have that information and we can see what's going on.
Okay.
Have you got any of the people lined up for interviews yet or?
Uh, no, sir. We've, uh, we have a decent stack of technician positions. And we also have two, uh, operators that have applied. We are checking their licenses and gonna start scheduling some interviews next week or two.
So you do have a.
Oh, yes, yes. That's it.
Anything else?
No, sir.
I got a question. Somebody told me there was a crane out on the, is that what you just talked about or?
Uh, no, sir. That, that was, uh, yesterday morning about seven-thirty. The, uh, new, one of the newest generators did have a, uh, oil leak, uh, for the lift station on the Tansas. They came in yesterday, they pulled it out, they're taking it, they've already got the motor shipped out to Bradenton, and they're doing the repairs and they'll get it back as soon as possible.
Okay, I just, somebody come to me and asked me what was going on. I said, I'll ask, so I did.
We're just trying to keep the traffic off the golf course and that easement, so it doesn't tear anything up. And they were just more comfortable taking the unit back to their shop to, to do that type of work.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Any public comment on this? Thank you, sir. Unfinished business. New business. Discussion to and from board.
Haven't gotten any letters this week.
Any discussion to and from board?
I'd just like to ask, uh, it seems to me like last few meetings, we've had a lot of problems with our mics. Is it something we can, I know we're doing, do we have to check batteries all the time or?
All the batteries have been checked. Oops, sorry.
I, I mean, I don't.
Maybe I'm having a problem, but all the batteries have been replaced this morning when I came in with brand-new ones. Maybe it's the mics, I'm not sure.
Okay, well, I just, I think somebody should check it because we seem to have problems.
And it has been checked. That's part of the process of setting up.
Okay.
Aren't these new mics?
They are.
Should we maybe, did we get these from, uh, the local?
We did. Um, I can, I can ask them to just see if they can come and take a look and make sure there's not issues. Um, obviously, as you can see, I'm quite a bit further back from this one. I asked that they were turned up louder because I know last meeting, um, one of the issues was that, that they were a little low. Kind of the same thing we typically reiterate is that the biggest thing is we're making sure that we're into the mic as opposed to.
And, and again, how much was the ones that you could wear? Do you remember offhand?
I don't remember offhand. If I had to do a guesstimate, I think it was somewhere in the realm of fifteen hundred dollars apiece.
I just wanted to make sure that, and I'm sure that you guys are gonna, I just want to make sure that we're trying to tackle this problem. Seems to be a problem.
This one, Bassett? Bassett?
Yeah.
I'd get Bassett back.
Yep, I'll ask, I'll ask them to, um, come and just kind of do a diagnostic.
Any other comments?
Especially on the ones that aren't working like hers and mine. Like put a rubber band around those and make sure they double-check.
Sure.
All right, I just see that somebody joined the meeting just a minute or so ago, so I'm gonna ask, just to be on the safe side. Are there any public comments? From anybody?
John.
Mark Camp, resident. I'm not gonna fall on the sword here, but I will publicly say that I think I discovered the problem. On the agenda, on the cover page, you have one phone number and ID to call into. On the next page that lists the agenda, you have another phone number to call in and an ID. And someone, somewhere along the line, must have corrected it and seen it, but online, they didn't correct it. So that's the one I went to, and that's the one I kept on trying, and that's why they said I couldn't get in, that we were waiting on you, I suspect. So the, the, I think the key was, it was never changed online, and that's what I go by, because I don't get this agenda until I get here. So, okay, but I thank you guys.
Any other public comments? adjourned.